You need a coffee?
No.
You just need to smoke it. Or not.
That much is done.
Secondhand smoke I inhale most of my childhood.
You hear us Jim?
I can hear you.
We don't hear you.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Nope, he's, we're, we're unmuted.
Did he acknowledge yours?
Yes, he did.
I can hear you.
Let me service.
We, we hear. We see you shaking your head, but we don't hear you.
We don't, you can't hear the rattle. He's got his mic muted.
Oh, there he goes. Now he's. Can you talk?
Yeah, I can talk. Can you hear me?
Speaker, it looks like it's Xed.
That's because I have to have this one Xed in order for, otherwise we'll have backfeed.
Okay.
You talk?
Yeah, I can talk. Can you hear me okay or? I can hear you guys talking.
Choice of technology.
I know. But it's subtle, subtle ways. Well, we're live, so I don't know what you want to do.
Um, I could probably have him on my cell phone. He could speak over the cell phone. Well, it's good to meet him started now when he's on board.
Okay.
All right, we'll call the city if you want a common council meeting to order Monday, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Let the record show all are present with the exception of Taylor, absent excuse. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of meditation.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, item three on the agenda, approve. A pool of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three common council minutes. Any additions? We have a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is public comment communications. Three, three minute time limit per person. If anyone would have anything to say under public comment, please step up to the podium. State your name and your address.
Still those one twenty-four and Lee Street. Same number bringing up as a parliamentary procedure issue. I noticed when I was reading over the agenda and the minutes in the package. I noticed when reading the public works committee meetings of March second. Present where all the persons blah and this Nikki excuse absence, all the persons Taylor and Zimmerman. Therefore, there's no clause. Yet there were two items on that agenda that they moved forward for counsel consideration tonight is on your agenda items A B or A A and A. Reading over this, it looks like. According to parliamentary rules, you can't discuss those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak under public comment this evening? Anyone else wish to speak under public comment this evening? If there's no one else to speak under cup, public comment, public comment will be closed. Item five boards, commissions, committee and staff reports. Personnel committee, agenda minutes, public works committee, agenda minutes, finance committee, agenda minutes and staff reports. Questions or concerns on any of those? Go ahead.
For the Wisconsin Clean Marina program, there's a checklist comments are to obtain. There's the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Checklist to maintain the Wisconsin Clean Marina program. How are those? How are those, how are those going along?
Augie, could you come up? Just so everybody at home can hear better on it. Thing if we decide to use our microphones, that'll help the folks at home. So thank you.
Yeah, son. Here was.
Yeah, we're coming. Okay. I just gotta do a couple of things that be required to do. And, you know, I'm filling in as much as I can. I'm not sure how many more I left to do, but I've been in contact with.
Thank you, Augie. Any other comments? If not entertain a motion approved as submitted?
I just have one of the. Under the public works committee minutes, if you know, it's under items three, four and five, it says discussion. Now, I don't believe there was any action taken at the public works committee. It just said simply discussion. And I believe that I was under the understanding that that could go to the city council if there was not a quorum. I guess if I'm an air then.
I don't know anything in. Ordinance that recreated the standing committees that said that they absolutely had to take a recommendation or make one to forward it. It's sort of a. It's sort of a, I guess it's sort of a discretionary thing that the chair of the committee could decide. You know, we really don't need to have this back next month when we have more than two people. But that's something we could, we could resolve later on. It doesn't, not having a standing committee make a recommendation doesn't necessarily preclude. Counsel from doing so if particularly in the case the chair says, you know, really no reason to bring it back here. You did have another item on the agenda. There were actually three items on that business agenda. And one of them you. You elected to say, no, we're not ready yet. So bring it back again next month. So. You just sort of decided and I, I, I believe it would be at the discretion of the chair if they elect to, if they have something on their agenda and a little bit. Forward, they can do so without actually having a formal committee recommendation.
I believe that was the discussion that took place, Nathan, correct? If I'm not mistaken.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
For a second?
A second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Post, motion carried. Mayor's report, item six. At this time, I would like to appoint Amy Dejet, Dejanov for an unexpiring term to the lighthouse preservation committee. You've got the information background on her in your packet. So entertain a motion to approve that.
I make a motion. We approve Amy for the lighthouse committee.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Post, motion carried. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Paul Nimmer for his thirty-five years of service to the Kiwanee Fire Department. I'd also like to thank Sean Swanson for thirteen years working in the public works department. And the park supervisor, nine of those years were full time. Both of them, anyone that knows them knows that they put a whole lot of dedication in the city of Kiwanee for all the years that they were here. And Kiwanee is definitely a better place for it. They're both gonna still be in the area and they'll still, you'll still see them around volunteering and doing things in the area and. We're grateful for that. That's what makes City of Kiwanee such a beautiful place to live is all the time and dedication people have been put in. So. You guys see them out and about, be sure to give them a congratulations and thank them for their service to the city. That's all I have on our mayor's report. Item seven A unfinished business ambulance department update and report.
So a kind of an update on the grants we're at and some changes again because those things changed. So. So roughly we are awarded or are going to be awarded about two hundred and one thousand dollars total. And so far we've spent approximately eighty-three thousand seventy-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. I know there's a few more bills that got added to that in the last week or so, but that's what has been reported to the grants committees already. And that was reported so we can get the second half of these various grants. So the items remaining on our list. And up to vote it. So we have roughly bought just under a hundred and eighteen thousand left. On these grants, money that's coming in. The remaining items on our initial wish list is about fifty thousand dollars worth of items. And then we found out since the talk to you last that initially we thought we'd have to send the second oldest ambulance into the factory to get. Retrofitted for a power lift. We do not. They can come here and do it and it was already done. Actually at a very insubstantial cost. I think the bill was just under eight hundred dollars. For them to send a technician out to retrofit the rail in safety rail where the power lift attaches to. So. We did not know that before previously. They said we'd have to send it in. And then they're like, oh, wait a second. That's that model. We can come out and do it. So. So basically after our initial wish list is done, we have about sixty-seven thousand left. And then adding in the second power lift is another twenty thousand. And newer stair chairs, we're looking at about another twenty thousand for those. So we have roughly about twenty-six thousand dollars left between these two grants. And basically, like I said, we had. I had one report already do in this month for the one grant. The second report is due in March thirty-first. And then we'll get the second half of the funds and then we can spend them as well. So. That's basically where we're at with those funds. So. And these are funds that are completely outside of our budget. Not one penny of. Local taxpayer money going into them. So.
Can we go on? This is an annual event?
Yeah, I highly doubt that. These are both special grants that were only approved for this one year. So. Would be nice, but. It's nice to get them. So I can get some.
Good work.
Yeah. And the powerless is, I don't know if anybody has seen it. I haven't even tested out the new one. It just got installed about a little over a week ago. Kathy loves it. A lot of our people love it already. Essentially, you basically bring the cot up to the back of the ambulance and it loads itself. Saves a lot of back strain of having to lift the cot and push it in. So, and if you have a heftier patient, that can be quite a bit. So. And I know a lot of other departments said, you know, one back injury. Could well more than cost what the cost of the actual unit is. So you're looking at quarter million or more for one back injury. Versus we got them, the two units for about twenty thousand dollars each. So. So not a bad deal. So. All right.
Well, thanks for your work on that.
You're welcome. Any questions on that so far? Yes, Joanne.
So I'm sorry, but right. So you're saying you spent, you're spending twenty thousand dollars on a lift chair? Right. Or what is, what are you?
Lift system for a cot.
Lift system.
Yes.
What else are, what else?
Car lift for, well, so the other remaining items on our list and then adding in power stair chairs.
All three of them. Okay.
Yeah, three of them. We had voted this last month as well and. It fits within the scope of the grant. So.
Okay, got it. Thank you. It's nice to see you up and walking.
It is so nice to be up and walking without a cane or a walker or wheelchair. So you have no idea. So.
Awesome.
Getting there. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Item seven B, we have a comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments to correct errors in prior actions. I'm not going to read all these ordinances, but if we want to go through them individually, he and explain to the council.
Just by way of background. The city G I S is provided through a contractor's root Kurt Milky. And one of the things we decided to do rather than asking Bay Lake to revise our map and then give us paper maps and then they're not revisable. Was we'll just add a zoning layer. We just add a map layer, zoning map layer to the G I S. For. Hundred dollars, something like that. Thousand, I think. Anyway, it requires us to provide them all the updates since that map was originally adopted in two thousand twelve. So I'm going through the list and, and. Starting in January of two thousand twenty-one, there was a series of actions that were done. I'll call them actions because what happened is somebody makes a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation. Which isn't the same thing as saying we adopted an ordinance to amend the zoning map or adopt an ordinance to amend the conference plan map. So as a result, there wasn't actually any ordinance adopted. There wasn't anything to change the ordinance. If you have an ordinance, you have to. Adopt another ordinance to amend that ordinance. Which is a lot of wordsmithing or a lot of word salad, just to simply say that you have to do it. There's a procedure. And in these, there was a total of four applications starting in January twenty twenty-one and continuing through April of twenty twenty-two where. That process wasn't done. Everything up to that point had been completed. The public notice had been made. The public hearing was held by the planning commission. A recommendation was forwarded. Everything was done correctly up to the point when it got here and then for some reason staff didn't. Provide the correct material. So council approved something they thought was correct and it wasn't actually correct. I talked to the city attorney about these cases and he said, there's no statute of limitations on how long it would take to do this. Don't have to redo it because you did everything correctly. You just have to basically sign off on these ordinances. There are, as I mentioned, there are four applications and that involves a total of six ordinances. In the first case, ordinance is six thirty-six and six thirty-seven applied to the property that. Tentatively addressed is seven nineteen Lakeshore Drive. This is a property that is currently zoned R two. Supposed to be zone public storage. This is the one where the city adopted a new ordinance to add the public storage district. There is attached to that also a conference of plan designation, which is ordinance six three seven. Well, actually, six three six is the conference of plan amendment. Six three seven is the rezoning. Six three six is to amend the conference of plan, the twenty-year general plan design map, which is map two point one on your. In the conference of plan, change the designations from highway, commercial and residential to industrial to permit the district to go there. The second two ordinances, six three eight, six three nine pertained to the property fifteen twenty River Road. Which was a request to amend the plan to go front to amend the ordinance to go from A one to R one. In order to do that, conference plan has to go from natural area to residential for that property. The third one in the, in this thing, and they're actually, we're actually going in reverse order by date. The third one is. The property, there was actually two properties at seven oh four Baumeister Drive and fifteen oh one Dodge Street, which is basically at the end of Dodge Street. An ordinance six forty, the two properties involved, we're going to go from A one to R one. And then the fourth, and then the final ordinance, which is actually six forty-one. Is to change the zoning from thirteen on thirteen twenty-three Ellis Street, which is actually two parcels from B one to R one. The ordinance, the package includes all of the application materials that were filed with those applications. At the time they were reviewed. This is just simply a clean up. So you take them one at a time. Theoretically, I guess we could take them all collectively as one. Boat and just simply say, and just make sure you reference every single ordinance so that we can cover them on one boat.
So you want me to read each ordinance number prior to requesting a motion to accept the chain, the amendments?
Yeah, you have, it actually has to be a motion to approve, approve the ordinances.
To make it a motion.
Would have to approve each thing the way.
Well, you, you would have to list it. So whoever's making the motion, you're going to list C, you know, six three six dash two zero two three. And then go on.
Okay. So I, you, so I wouldn't just simply read on our request a motion for the following ordinances? The person has, oh, good.
It's got to be part of the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number six three six dash two zero two three. And should I just keep on reading them all? Ordinance number six three seven two zero two three. Ordinance number six three eight two zero two three. Ordinance number six three nine two zero two three. Ordinance number six four zero dash two zero two three. Ordinance number six four one two zero two three.
Second by Nelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carried. All right, item seven B authorized replacement of storm sewer main manhole. And sanitary sewer manhole in the alley east of Milwaukee Street, State Highway forty-two, south of Harrison Street. Oops, I'm sorry. All those ordinances, I got blended right in. Let's go back to A A establish a spring electronics recycling event with dynamic. Nathan?
As you guys can recall, last year we know a electronics recycling program in the high school parking lot dynamic facilitated it. It had an overwhelming term turnout, did not have enough material to take in all the electronics. We ended up turning away quite a few people, unfortunately. They have elected to do another one, which would be free of cost, same scenario. They're going to front the money since this one will be on a D N R grant, just to facilitate the people that were turned away and. Other people as well. So I just wanted to bring this back before the council. Last time there was probably. Five or so nan hours tied up into the event that the city. Had a front a little bit just to help them get their materials unloaded and load materials back up. I'm hoping I can knock that number down. See if I can find a forklift that someone will be willing to. Donate for them to use and they would have their own forklift operator. So the high school had stated two dates, the one that sounds like it would work would be April fifteenth for the high school. So just as long as we have the council support to do so, I'd like to. See if we can hold another electronics recycling.
Motion to support the recycling.
Okay, motion by Nelson to establish a spring electronics recycling event with dynamic. Do we have a second? Any further discussion?
So I'm a big supporter of it and. Everybody get there early. I will get there early this next time.
Can you relax?
By saying aye. Post, motion carried. Thank you, Nathan. Eight B authorized replacement of storm sewer main manhole and sanitary sewer manhole in the alley east of Milwaukee Street, State Highway forty-two. South of Harrison Street.
Yeah, this is a request from Public Works, seeking approval complete. It's a small replacement project, approximately a hundred and eighty linear feet of storm sewer pipe. In an easement located behind east of the corner block of Milwaukee Street, south of Harrison. The existing storm sewer pipe is overdue for replacement for two manholes, in particular, storm hole, storm water manhole, as well as the sanitary sewer manhole are both collapsing. And we're trying to do this now because the owner of the property. The formerly was Union Bank and owns the product, the, the parking area for Novak. By and them, that area there, they're looking to repave in June. And so we want to try and get this done before they go in there. Otherwise we end up paying to repave their area and we'd rather just not do that. So this is, this is the thing. Well, if we, if this is approved, then we will also work on arrangement with the property owner to ensure that. They don't start doing anything until June and then when we can get in there and get down with the selected contractor. Now, we did receive three estimates. With another one supplemental to include additional work into Harrison Street. We're proposing the more limited project in part to reduce the cost of the overall project and avoid putting, having to require bids, which would obviously slow this down. The three estimates are included. The low bidder is, the low estimate is Dorrink. The other one would have been about five thousand dollars more expensive or six thousand. These, all of these contractors are all. Have a good track record with the city. The only question at hand would be acquiring the materials for the job. Primarily PVC pipe, which is going to be used and the completion timing this spring. As I mentioned, we're going to complete an agreement with the property owner to make sure that the paving work is scheduled after our, after we're done. Digging up, replacing pipe and covering it over with gravel. They're designated paving contractors. I've been aware of this project and they're supportive of our attempt to do this. So the people. Put in pavement and then now let's go and take it up. Or do, do our work. Is going to be funded through the storm sewer portion of the general fund and the light items contractual services and main repair. We're not anticipating any additional funds. This is already, already in the budget. So. Now we're just looking for support for the, I guess, the lowest responsible bidder or estimate.
Do we have a motion to approve the owner for the work at twenty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars? Any further discussion?
Can you get the agreement from the property owner in writing?
Yeah, I have talked to the property owner or owners. I guess we could call them the rep. And ask instead of any approval from the council that we could outline everything. And then I'm sure we can have.
Any further discussion? Please call roll.
LaHa.
Yes.
Brewster.
Hi.
Chilton.
Hi.
Zimmerman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Taylor is absent. Was Nikki?
Brown.
Motion carrying. Eight C discussion and direction to staff regarding work program for E D A grant funded business park project.
This is a project that has been ongoing for twenty years or more. We created, the city created a business park development plan in two thousand and four with Ayers Associates. And near about three years ago, we started working on a grant filing through the United States Economic Development Administration or E D A. For funding to develop the project. The total cost that was finally submitted was per two million four hundred forty-one thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars. Of which the E D A would fund a maximum eighty percent of the cost, which is one million nine hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. With the city scheduled for a total expenditure of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred seven dollars and eighty cents. That is the. I guess you'd call that the minimum based on the amount of money granted. This grant application is filed in its completed form in April of last year and awarded on May third. With an ultimate grant deadline of five years after the award date. On the E D A grant administration process, the expectations the city would achieve several milestones along the way, which I've referred to as checkpoints. The first such checkpoint is the end of the design phase and the start of the construction phase, which is signified by the issuance of a notice to proceed to selected contractor. To do the construction. In order to reach that step, city would have to, would have completed the drafting and issuance of a request for proposals and qualifications. To review and select a civil engineer. It's not. Necessarily Cedar Corporation. They can't actually participate in the creation of the R F P because if they do, then they can't be selected. Anyway, to prepare the business park design work sufficient to reach bid documents. The selected engineer would also be tasked with reviewing bid documents, missions, make a recommendation on the bids and oversee construction permitting and onsite work. The second step would be selecting the engineer and then implementing that work. The third step would be evaluating the bid submissions, select a contractor based on submitted bid and internal contract for extraction services. Held the meeting, the. Held the meeting, the initial kickoff meeting and then issued the notice to proceed. At that point, we can finally, if we can finally submit our first request for reimbursement. It's not till that point when we actually start building it and we actually ask for money. Also, under the EDA grant as issued in May third, um, they anticipate all these steps that are issued up to the NTP being issued, uh, within one year of the grant award date, which would be May third of this year. Thus far, um, in order to maintain the city's grant award, I requested an additional month. I had a conversation with them two and a half weeks ago now. Uh, where they're asking what's going on, um, because I've submitted reports to them indicating we've done basically nothing. So I wanted to bring this forward. Uh, we, uh, elected to bring it to the public property committee for discussion. Public property committee held a meeting which was subquorum, so it was just a discussion. Um, and it was decided by the uh chair that we probably should move this forward to the council so we can move forward on this because we have, have to get back to them. There are a lot of issues to consider. The original grant application was supposed to include water supply and service issues that are currently on the north side of the city. There's a relatively lower water pressure on the north side. Um, and putting in a business park where you might have high intensity uses or even just sprinkler systems could impede that water supply. So there's an issue that we have to address there that is not being covered by the grant. The second one comes down to flexibility. The business park site, if designed based on the original plan concept in two thousand and four, uh, would require the extension of sanitary sewer water lines into the site, which depending on the design could be as much as thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred linear feet of sanitary sewer and is up to thirty-two hundred linear feet of water lines because they're trying to create a loop. Designed to connect to between both State, State Front Highway forty-two and Lake Shore Drive. The cul-de-sac would have been approximately nine hundred to one thousand linear feet. And the concern here is how far the construction process would have to go to create a viable business park. Uh, but remain flexible enough so that if somebody comes along and wants to do something different, we aren't building ourselves into a, a design problem. The cost to the city, based on the grant funding framework, city would be responsible for, as I've mentioned, over four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, fiscal year twenty-three budget does not include appro- uh, any money for this project appropriated. Um, city is responsible for all costs out of pocket, out of pocket to reach the notice to proceed. When the city is able to file for any reimbursements, so everything the engineer does up to that point, we have to cover. And then we wouldn't know if it was, we wouldn't know what we're getting into until they come up with a cost estimate. And we get bids. So we don't even know how much it's going to cost. The grant suggests it's supposed to cost us one point six million to do the sanitary water and the storm sewer and the roadway, but we don't know that for sure. Especially given inflation. And the, the grant is not going to, it's one point nine five three is the maximum reimburse we're going to get. So if it costs us three million dollars to build the thing, we're going to get one point nine five, three million dollars.
But I think, uh, if I could just interrupt for a second, Heath, I think part of the conversation when we're going to be creating the RFQ, RFP is making sure any of the, uh, interested engineering firms that are going to be bidding on this are aware of are aware of all of those, uh, things you just mentioned. You know, they're aware of the, uh, dollar amount that we're working with. And they're going to also be aware of the fact that we don't have a particular business that's going in there right now. So we don't want to put all kinds of infrastructure in that could be an absolute waste, depending on what would potentially get developed. So what minimum can we do with the money? To satisfy the, uh, to satisfy the grant, but yet maximize the impact that it could have in the future with the unknown. So I guess that's going to be the challenge we're going to have to face with the engineers. And have three million dollar project, obviously, that, that's gonna not be possible.
The other thing we're still, we have to, we also have to discuss, and this is something that's more aimed at the EDA, um, is our understanding, my understanding of the EDA grant is that it's supposed to be for business development, not residential development. Um, however, what types of uses are permitted there is not quite clear. Our grant write-up, which was included with your materials, suggested employment. But it's not entirely clear that it would per se exclude something like one of the things that you need to brought up, uh, a car condo or a, the parking structure that, you know, basically like a mini storage warehouse. Or something like a business incubator, like a, like a modified mini warehouse district that includes spaces for people to rent, run, run a business. It's not clear to me that their grant per se excludes a variety of different types of business uses, just what's permitted locally, provided, of course, it's not residential. Because this is for economic development, not for housing. Um, if it was housing, it would become from HUD, not EDA. So we have several issues obviously to resolve, either as part of this or in parallel to this project. Staff please a possible courses of actions to just move forward with the RFP, um, or RFQ. And we're going to be a program administrator on the parameters and timeframes, the idea that we would request an extension of one year from the current date. Out one more year so we can delay having to actually put something on the ground until May third, twenty twenty-four. With the hope that we'll have a lot more clarity by then on a design and on the cost. But I'm not, I, I won't kid you that it will ultimately, we're going to have to come up with available cash, use available cash balances in order to make this fly. So I'm, I'm open for questions at this point.
I've just got a couple, just a couple of questions here.
Okay.
Uh, under B eight, where it says economic impacts of the project. The third paragraph, it says, um, after running an input output model and including the remaining storage companies, the model predicts the proposed business park will create an estimate of two hundred and twenty-nine jobs and eleven million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in private placement. Are they referring in here, are they referring to the Manitowoc Industrial Park Plan? Or is that eleven million dollars and two hundred and twenty-nine jobs in reference to our business park plan?
I think it's referencing what's supposed to be ours. Uh, they use the Manitowoc Industrial Park as a, I guess, like a comp for what we're aiming for. But if, if you actually saw their map, their, their business park is a lot larger.
Um, I guess I.
I wouldn't.
Curious as to where we came up with two hundred and twenty-nine jobs.
Well, it's.
No, I'm.
It's a, it's a, it's an MC Q four data set. And what they do is they plug in a bunch of numbers and spits out these data. Um, I have no idea how that works. I have no idea how accurate. I mean, those, those numbers seem weirdly specific. It's not, oh, maybe about two hundred jobs and about eleven million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, you might as well throw out a thousand as long as you're throwing it out there.
Yeah, it's not clear to me that that's.
Yeah. Uh, then in the last paragraph, it says, lastly, three businesses have shown commitment slash interest. Um, these beneficiaries are created a total of thirty-one jobs in routine, ten. Um, on the next page, it says beneficiaries of the project, integrity quarters, snow addiction plowing, Merton's con- construction and concrete. And it gives an estimated private investment. How did we come, does anyone know how we came up with integrity quarters at one point two million? Snow addiction plowing at two hundred and fifty thousand and Merton's construction and concrete at one point two million. I say that only because I contacted Dennis Mertes today. Basically knows nothing about this. I asked him if he was interested, still interested in going in the business park and he asked me what I was talking about. And he asked me how long ago this was and I said, basically about two years ago. He said, why would I invest one point two million dollars? I'm sixty-three years old. He said, if I was going to build anything, I'd build something at my shop for seventy-five thousand. I guess my question is, the beneficiaries of this project, integrity quarters, snow addiction plowing and Merton's construction and concrete. Are we obtaining a grant based on the beneficiaries of this project?
I think you obtained a grant with the idea that they wanted to, wanted to identify beneficiaries. And so somebody identified beneficiaries. I don't know where they came up with these numbers. I don't know where they came up with the private investment. You would have thought that in order to do that, they would have actually gotten a letter of support from the companies that they cite so that they can actually prove that they're not just names on a application form, but that they actually are something real. But obviously, based on just the one contact, that's, it's problematic to say that we actually, is there anything other than just paper numbers?
I did do, I did do a search on snow addiction plowing, which comes up to, which comes with Becky Kohanik, but I do not have her, uh, phone number. Uh, my child, I do have his phone, right, in integrity coatings. Um, I left him a message, but he has not gotten back to me yet. I'm just wondering where we came up. When Dennis Mertens tells me that, he says, I mean, after, basically after he stopped laughing, um, then we had a conversation. So I'm guessing where we came up with the one point two million dollars for Merton's construction and concrete. He's just a small place like I am.
That's a really good question. I don't have any. I have not as yet found any record in the files that indicates where they came up with this stuff.
That is a great catch on, on your part. Um, my question is, is a city liable for any fraud or improper filling out a application for something like this? All right. Are we, are we in the hook or something for?
Well, not necessarily because if you get a grant based on misrepresentations, it's sort of on you to sort of figure it out. Because from the, from the perspective of the EDA, they're willing to help us build a business park. They're not interested in helping us recruit businesses. They're not going to do that. So they're just going to spend, they're going to provide money for us to build a business park and it's going to be sort of up to us to put people in it.
Right. The follow-up question, you mentioned, uh, like business condos or, or storage facilities. Would that qualify for, um?
I, I have not as yet had a chance to talk to the program administrator. I don't know that necessarily, as I say, it's pretty vague on the guidance as to what uses would be permitted, except that it's very specific, that's no residential. So it's sort of up to us what that looks like.
If you give you clarification, like, cause those, those are really popular to me, but then I see, uh, COVID on, uh, Connington James putting up more buildings for storage, so there's something's better to know.
And, and I don't want people to get too distracted with what could go there versus satisfying the grant that we currently have, because that's the biggest timeline crunch that we have. And if we're putting in infrastructure, ideally that's satisfying the grant and yet generic enough that we have the most possibilities to put up there, that's what we got to do first. We got to satisfy this grant, execute this grant. And, you know, keep open ideas on what we would like to see up there, but at the end of the day, you need to have somebody bring the money as a developer to put it in up there. Yeah, and the only reason I mentioned this was because, um, and Heath made reference to that too. Under B two, it says recommendations for the proposed business park would begin with water main transmission looping sanitary sewer and storm sewer would be installed with water main improvements, smooth thirty-six foot wide street will extend east into the business park site from the east edge of South forty-two through northeast to be planned to the planned cul-de-sac at the north central edge of this property. I guess my question was under B two and under this grant application, are we committed to doing what this says here? My question, uh, the reason my concern is I don't want to build a bridge to nowhere. If we're putting in storm sewer and sanitary sewer and we're putting in a street, it shouldn't be in the right place. I wouldn't want to put sanitary sewer, storm sewer in, in a road in, and then have to dig it up at our expense.
Well, but isn't this, again, that would go with the grant? I mean, once you bring the, the, um, engineers in, that would not necessarily be what we would do if it wasn't considered what was feasible, just because it was written in here, correct?
I thi- I think they would give us a realm of latitude. Latitude in terms of the specific, this, this is a, this particular description, outline and scope. It doesn't really cover, it actually doesn't really address the question. Um, because what they're asking for there is not quite as specific as what was provided. So I, I think they would probably give us latitude for what we actually build because we're trying to provide as much flexibility as possible. Um, the main goal here is to provide the opportunity to provide access to the site to improve facilities to the site so they can actually build on it.
In the public property meeting, we did discuss a lot of these things, you, including are those viable people that are wanting to invest? And there was going to be some follow-up on there. And who were you contacting Heath in regards to what is required in this grant that we have to stick to versus residential versus?
The, uh, the EDA grant administrator that is our direct contact is a gentleman named Shamika Mead. I think he's out of the Chicago. So, yeah, he's our local contact. I can, I can request clarification from him as to this and then also at the same time request the extension of their the first check, check up, mark pointer, checkpoint. Right now, we are pleased because we're going to be ourselves. It's, that's, that's pretty cheap. We can do that ourselves for nothing. Now we just have to have a matter of trying to get it out there so the people can respond.
Questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve, uh, does that have to move forward with the? I don't hear a motion, just a direction to staff?
Maybe it says motion authorized staff to develop an RFP up Q for engineering.
All right then, is anyone having objection to directing staff to proceed with the RFQs and everything as outlined? If there's no objection?
I just think we need to be more specific on, I mean, what is it, May third? Is it time plane? I mean, we're, we're talking bucks a ticket. I mean, we need to at least know what, what your extension could be and what your rules are before we, we have a lot, it seems like a lot of questions if this is even a viable grant with what we have in it.
Yeah. Well, I can have this conversation with him because we're still on the hook until May third and they're going to obviously want to have a decision before that point. And I told them I would discuss it with my elected officials and come back to them as questions and see, see what we can do. So I can, I can ask them about the vibe, but what if you want, I can go ahead and discuss this with him. See about the extension if we're, we're actually approved to do that. And if so, I can bring the report back to council.
So let me just read the, the requested action from staff. A motion to authorize staff, number one, to develop an RFP slash Q for engineering services under the terms of the EDA grant. Item two, authorize the public property committee to sign off on the final RFP slash Q for advertising. Item three, communicate a revised initial schedule to EDA for completion of the initial process to a first deadline of May third, twenty twenty-four. So that would be the motion I would entertain. Twenty twenty-four, two.
Oh, okay.
Twenty twenty-four. After the, the background that, that Heath gave.
After the, the background that, that Heath gave. That's what we're looking to do. He's gonna design this R F P R F Q in-house for engineering services. To look at the, them doing the design. Then you're also authorizing a public property committee to sign off on that final R F P P slash Q for advertising. And then Heath will uh, communicate the revised schedule to the E D A. Grants requesting a year extension.
What do you think your timeline would be Heath? I'm getting this all done. Do you have any idea? Well, I mean, I can contact him. I can start the process of contacting you tomorrow. Um. The uh. R F P R F Q, I have gotten. A couple of examples I can blend. Um, to come up with something wordsmith, but. E D A because of their process wants to see it too, to make sure that it's got everything that they want to reference in it. Um, and then they sign off on it and I can bring it to our public property committee. Sign off. I can communicate that with Janita and then we can schedule a meeting so I can. I'll look at.
I, I just have a quick question.
Uh, we just got the motion, so bring it a second. We'll get to your question. Second, okay, go ahead.
I'm, I'm not a hundred, a hundred percent up to speed on all this. I apologize. But. I'm looking at this property here right now and there's, there's nothing on it right now, correct?
Right, well, except for Phil.
This, this question is coming way out of left field to just humor me. What if we just say, you know what? Let's just walk away from this grant. Let's put this property up for sale. Move on.
Well.
Like it's, it's on left field, like I said.
Yeah, y- y- you don't like to turn. Grant money down. We've, we've had, like he said, we've had the, this process been going on. Right since two thousand between land acquisition, uh, the business park plan. Um, trying to get something developed there. It was just seen. For many years that that would be a great location to have an industrial slash business park of some sort and um. It, you know, the monies, the monies were awarded and so now, now we're here tasked with the job to implement everything. Clarify the terms of the grant. Um, you know, we had a couple of things going on last year, so now we're playing a little bit of catch-up, so we're gonna have to move the deadline. Hopefully another year and I mean, working with the uh, grant administrator uh. Overseer, it, he, he sounds very um. Open to working with the city and. They don't want the money back. I mean, they don't, I mean, they, they don't want us to blow it off, but they want us to, you know.
Yeah, they, they.
From the cost perspective, we're only talking about Keith and the staff's time to put together.
Correct.
Isn't a lot of. Money at this time, so. Since we're not asking for any money at this time.
Except for the average.
I really think we should move forward. It makes no sense to stop now after it took so long to get the grant. I'm not saying once we get the R F Qs in and then we have a better understanding.
There'll be more decisions to be made.
That we can take those sorts of decisions. At this point, it doesn't seem to be a. What we're saying we're gonna stop.
Do we know where the other four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars is gonna come from?
We'll figure it out.
That's it.
When would we have to, when we would have, evidently we'd have to borrow half a million dollars. Let's just say half a million dollars. We would have to borrow the money, correct?
Does that become a line item expense under general obligation debt?
It probably could, you know.
Yes. Does anyone know what the uh, uh, the source of, the source of um, funding? According to this grant is uh, boards of commissions loan. Do we have any idea what that is?
Say that one more time?
Well, uh, uh, that.
The board of, of the plans.
Boards of commissions loan. It says that, that it's, that's, that's what's listed as the funding. That's the state. Okay, that's so, so I mean, according to this thing, it, we would have that in cash on, on one, one, two, twenty twenty-one, five hundred four thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars.
Yeah, it's under B ten B. I, I don't. Uh, and I don't know where they. I don't know.
We don't have a loan with them.
Okay, I was just, it seems like.
I don't know if they were planning on to applying for a loan from them, but we don't currently have a loan.
Unless they. Yeah, we're not, we're not paying a loan to them, so I don't know where that money is from.
That's where they said the money source would be coming from. So.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make one comment, please. Um, I would just like to sort of to remember that we still have Dodge Street to do. We still have the Marina to do. We still have this to do. I don't think we can all sit here at a council meeting and say. Every time we borrow money, it's gonna go into general, general obligation debt. At some point in time, there just isn't gonna be any more money for general obligation debt. So I mean, if we're gonna do Dodge Street and we're gonna do all these other projects that were started. You know, maybe a referendum would be the way to go because. We can't be putting a line item in a budget. Every six months for general obligation debt. Pretty soon you're not gonna have any money to pay anything. How you gonna have any money to do anything? That's the concern I have is that we're moving forward with a lot of these projects. We don't know how we're gonna pay for it.
I don't, I don't disagree with you on that, but I do think that since we're not obligating ourselves and it seems like we're following up. On a grant that none of us seems to have much knowledge of who put it together, who proposed it, where are all of these, this information? Including a loan, we have no idea if we at least talk to the state or whomever you're with the grant writer or whoever you're gonna talk to. From Chicago, to give some clarity on this. At, at least we're gonna know, make a decision with knowledge right now. I feel like it's like. Wh- what's really true and what's not. I don't think we, any of us know.
I agree with what John said. We need to, at some point, get these big projects together, prioritize and make decisions on what goes forward. What goes not. We need to gather that information around all of them.
I agree.
And we need to sit down and determine. What can we afford? What's the priority for the city and then say these ones are gonna move forward and these ones we're gonna hold back. And make that, once we have enough information on all the projects, because it's, there are decisions that we have to, we can't look at these in isolation. Because they all look good in isolation, but we can't afford all. So we do have to sit down and. Prioritize amongst the large projects and make those decisions in the forward.
And to your point, Jen, with this, with, with this situation, it's not a very, it's, it's, it's not a substantial cost to us right now to put out an R F Q. To.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Uh, we don't have any real monies involved, so we don't need to, we can call roll anyway.
La ha.
Yes.
Brewster.
Hi.
Shelton.
Hi.
Zimmerman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Taylor's absent. Was Nikki?
Hi.
Brown.
Motion carried. A D approves sale of portion. Of tax parcel thirty-one, two, four, one, G L seventeen, one dash thirteen point one to yacht Haven Kiwanee LLC.
Uh, this is one that uh, you previously indicated you would support the sale of. Uh, this is the portion of. Was attached to Father Marquette Park. It's west of Hathaway Drive. Um. Part of the, there are contingencies attached to it. One was a phase one environmental. Site assessment, which we completed forwarded over to. Yacht Haven Kiwanee. And, or yacht works and then um. Partial legal description of property for purchase, which is attached to this uh, memo. Um, and then establishment of a stormwater drainage improvement, which for. Clarity was basically. Made of basically the entirety of the parcel. Just to make it easier. Um. We've completed all those steps and the overall contingent costs for that. Um. We will. Based on the purchase price of five thousand dollars, we'll make a little bit more than we spent. Yet here. So. Any questions?
So do I have a motion?
A motion to. Accept this. As written.
Second. Is there a second?
Four, five thousand dollars?
Yes, that's purchase price.
Also, I can.
Any further discussion?
I, no more, no more costs to do engineering. We're all in, we're getting five thousand dollars and you know, we, you know, we spent on it all.
Uh, the. The most expensive piece was the environmental assessment, which was around thirty-two hundred dollars. And then we spent about seven hundred dollars on the legal description of the easement.
Barely.
We made a little more, as I said, we did a little, a little bit more money that we spent and that's.
We maintain the easement uh.
Yeah, we.
To the stormwater management there for the city.
The easement covers the entirety of this, my description.
Can anyone's looked over this contract?
Yeah, you didn't have a problem.
Okay. You can put the money.
Hey, that's not in the motion, bud. All right, uh, any further discussion? If not, please call a roll.
La ha.
Yes.
Brewster.
Hi.
Shelton.
Hi.
Zimmerman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Taylor's absent. Was Nikki?
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
More secure. A E approve improvements. To the Kiwanee Pierhead Lighthouse by the Friends of the Kiwanee Pierhead Lighthouse.
Do you want to take this one? Or do you want me to do it?
Well, cool. I'd like to do it.
Well, I, I. This is a request from the Friends of the Kiwanee Pierhead Lighthouse, uh, five oh one C three nonprofit. Uh, which is linked to, to or, or affiliated with, I guess, the Lighthouse Preservation Committee. Seeking approval from the common council to basically authorize them to make some improvements to the existing structure. Um. The current structure is owned by us and, well, owned as a twenty-five year lease to the city. Um, maintained primarily through donations through the friend, friends organization. Um, we've provided some funding, but most of it's been nonprofit efforts. Uh, the present request is to restore parts of the existing structure by removing metal plates covering ten windows on the first floor of the lighthouse. Then replacing the existing window structures, several of which are either broken or missing. With replacements handcrafted by Barry Nelson. Uh, including storm windows made of tempered glass to be more resistant to damage from the elements or storm surges. And then also following removal of the metal plates. Uh, there are six total, um, papal and welding will then. After they've removed the plates, install a metal band, which will be like a seam between the metal, the existing metal siding and the foundation, which is stone. Um. So it creates a belt to provide additional protection, stability to the structure. The total estimated cost for this would be one thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars for the windows and another six thousand dollars for the removal of the metal plates. And installation of the metal band, um, to be done by papal and welding. These are all gonna be paid for by the Friends of. Lighthouse and the project is anticipated to be completed sometime in late spring, early summer. Um, included in the back, package is a bunch of pictures that. I got turned into a document. Um, none of this is coming from general fund. This is just requesting permission to, to. Basically make improvements to the structure we have at least.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion?
I, I would like to add some, um, if you notice in the pictures, um, there were only two. Of the, the hardware. There were only two that were viable or, you know, the other ones were, you know, mismatched or whatever. Barry actually made. The additional one, so he made eight matches. Cause he couldn't find them, so he made them and everything he did was custom, he custom made these windows and he did it for like fourteen hundred dollars. I mean, he did a huge donation to us. All I can say is. Winter Park's loss is the lighthouse's gain. Because he put in a lot of time.
He did it for his baby sister.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, so I mean, this is, this is a project to have those custom-made windows would have cost us a lot more. So we're very, very grateful and, and we're on the process now. We're working on, you know, doing repair to the base. And we will also be um, at this time, putting on a plate that designates it. As a national historic register, it's that it's on the national historic registry, so that'll all be done at the same time.
Steve showed me the work that Barry did and, and it's amazing. You can't tell the difference between the original and. The, the custom plated ones, so.
Do a little plaque in recognition to her.
Um. We will probably eventually do something. I think we gave him a T-shirt.
I guess bar one.
Yeah, yeah. He gets worth it. She gets a bottle of wine.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, F, approved proposal for Holy Rosary Childcare twenty twenty-three Summer Rec Program.
Uh, yes, this is the annual uh, summer recreation program, uh, city-funded, administered on the city's behalf by Holy Rosary Childcare. Um. We've been doing this for years. Uh, the childcare currently, the submitted proposal reflects a cost of increase of four hundred and seven dollars and fifty-six cents from last year. Uh, this is gonna be covered uh, in listed item under contractual services and the money is there for this. So it's just. Asking approval to um. Do this.
So we have a motion to approve the summer caps program.
We make a motion, we approve the summer caps program. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Please call a roll.
La ha.
Yep.
Brewster.
Hi.
Shelton.
Hi.
Zimmerman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Taylor's absent. Was Nikki?
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Motion carried. G, authorize repairs to docks at Kiwanee Marina.
Uh, yeah, followed damage done to the docks in the Marina last winter resulting in over seventy thousand dollars in repairs. A series of decisions were taken by common council. To try to reduce exposure to potentially high repair costs moving forward. Including purchase of twenty plus impellers to reduce ice buildup around the docks as well as removal of the fingers from the main docks to reduce cross-flow damage. Uh, these measures uh, were investments of considerable cost, including primarily higher electric utility bills. To run the impellers during the winter, but the objective was to reduce the city's exposure to dock damage. Uh, with that as pretext. We've uh, received an estimate from Pier and Waterfront Solutions LLC of Sturgeon Bay. Following a site visit review on March eighth, twenty twenty-three, provided a written estimate, which is attached. In summary, the total repair work is. Proposed at a cost of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and one dollars and ninety-nine cents, which includes approximately forty thousand, four thousand dollars. Which includes the four thousand dollars in cost to replace sixty-three feet of three-inch galvanized piping. Uh, staff is of the opinion we may have the ability to replace some of that ourselves with in-home, in-house piping. But as noted on the estimate, this proposed cost is based on. The review at the site visit date, which may be out of date by the time they arrive for the repair work, which would be anticipated by the end of March. The estimate is based on the existing conditions of the docks. As council is well aware, the docks are well beyond their useful life. Um, this repair work is Band-Aid, but it's necessary if we're gonna open this season starting next month. At this point, uh, we, we are requesting authorization to make this repair. Uh, although I would suggest providing a little leeway in case the cost goes up. Um, so I'm requesting a motion to approve the cost estimate with additional leeway uh, with amount not to exceed thirty thousand. Um, anticipating that it's gonna cost us roughly what they estimated.
We have to fix it. So. I would make a motion to approve the repairs.
I'll second.
And that's not to exceed the thirty thousand.
Not to exceed the thirty thousand dollars.
Your motion in a second. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, please, I'm sorry, Wendy, go ahead.
Um, I have two issues. I agree this needs to be done. I wish this to come to the finance committee. And we're also kind of waiting on the audit report for accurate numbers to know what we have in front of us.
Any further discussion? Please call a roll.
La ha.
Yes.
Brewster.
Hi.
Shelton.
No.
Zimmerman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Taylor's absent. Was Nikki?
Right.
Right.
H, approved change to hiring authority in the City of Kiwanee Personnel Policy Manual.
Uh, city's preparing to hire new non-department head employees, um, under the current Personnel Policy Manual, section two point two C. Uh, full-time positions, regular part-time positions, final hiring decision made by the. Uh, city council. Upon recommendation of from a personnel committee and the administrator. Uh, seasonal temporary part-time hiring positions may be made by the city administrator department head. This process using this can potentially reduce the turnaround when making a decision and offering a position to a potential employee by three to six weeks. Which we place. Uh, while we place the hiring decision before the personnel committee. And then following common council meeting, which can be up to three weeks later. I provided a couple of examples as an example and, and to illustrate these, these timeframes. In the current job market, such delays can cost us quality candidates for open positions and delay hiring. So we're, it's not necessary for non-department head candidates who report to department heads that have been appointed by council. Therefore, under the proposed amendment to the above section two point two C. Uh, we say city council will have the hiring authority. uh, we say city council will have the hiring authority with the recommendation from the personnel committee for city administrator and department head positions, all of the positions, final hiring authority will be department heads or the administrator and or the mayor with, within authorized salary ranges in the job posting. This was recommended and to the personnel committee and personnel committee has carried forward that recommendation and recommended this change. Um, no fiscal impact is expected, uh, so the positions would be potentially filled quickly. However, posted positions were also tended to be filled, in which case this would reduce the impacts to other employees filling in for vacancies. So.
I just have a question, Eve, if you could just clarify that last sentence under the new section.
Uh huh.
It says all of the positions, the final hiring authority will be the department heads administrator and or mayor within authorized salary ranges, job postings. The and or is what I had a question about. Does that, is that saying that the mayor could hire someone? Could hire a person other than a department head or the administrator without council approval? As long as they stay within salary range? Because that I would maybe have a problem with. Now, if it's a combined decision between the department heads administrator and mayor, I think that's one thing. But the question I have, does this say that the mayor could hire someone? Because this would give the mayor authority to hire anyone without council approval as long as they stay within salary range.
Oh. I, I see your point up to a point. Um, there's another section of the personnel manual that uh, is basically like the anti nepotism clause.
We're not talking nepotism though.
But it would, it would be a situation where if it was like a family member or somebody related, then definitely yes, but I, I, I think your point is taken.
I mean, I think with what John's saying is just to remove the word or.
Take out or.
Or it should be a combined decision of the department heads administrator and mayor is what I'm saying.
Yeah, because the way I read that, uh, yeah, it would give the mayor authority to hire any of those positions individually.
That's not what we discussed.
Yeah, that is, wasn't.
Well, that's what it says.
Yeah, I know. I think we should remove.
We, we kept going back and forth on how to make it float.
Yeah, I think we should remove the word or.
Jim stumbled on the evidence.
I mean, the big thing we talked about was the fact that, um, we're losing out on candidates because we have such a slow process and quite frankly, the personnel committee and the council are not looking at those positions closely and the people that we're hiring and you know, I'm, we're probably not very qualified to say, yes, they would be good or not good hires. Why put ourselves in that whole process? And slow it down when we all know, you know, with the internet and how quickly things move, people are moving jobs quicker or have the ability to. And when these candidates come in and they got two or three job offers on the table and they really want ours, but they can't wait, you know, three to six weeks because of our process.
So if someone were to make a motion, then with that change of language to strike the word or then isn't it satisfactory to everyone?
The motion to approve by striking the word slash or from the, um, amendment. So it should read city council will have the hiring authority with the recommendation from the personal committee for city administrator and department head positions. All the positions, the final hiring authority will be the department heads slash administrator and mayor within authorized salary ranges slash job posting.
Can we have a second? Any further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks for that clarification. Aye, uh, proof change to compensation for employees with operators licensure in the water and sewer utilities.
Uh, Public Works Department, uh, including water and sewer utility staff was previously union represented. Though that was discontinued years ago. Uh, nevertheless, a previous payout that had been included in the union contract was maintained formally over the years following the dissolution of union, which was an annual bonus to water and sewer utility staff members to maintain retaining operators licensure is required to perform their work. Under the previous system, an employee would be paid one hundred fifty dollars, one hundred fifty dollars for the maintenance of one license per year and two hundred fifty dollars for two licenses per each year. Payment of said bonus would occur with the first payroll of each calendar year. Uh, however, this said policy was never incorporated. So, um, your, your new staff got, got rung up by employees who said, where's our bonus? We had no idea this was even a thing. We did ultimately elect to pay the bonus because this was past practice, but what we're suggesting here is um, incorporating it into the personnel policy manual. So it's clear. So it's actually a thing that's written down. So we don't have this fun, fun and games next year. At their February ten meeting, uh, the personnel committee recommended the council, uh, for the bonus payment of hundred fifty dollars for one fifteen to basically continue the process. Um, staff assumes the employee handbook is the personnel policy manual. So we've proposed, um, recommended, um, language, the personnel policy manual as listed in section four point one zero, uh, which would be a new subsection C with the written title bonus for maintenance of licensure. Water and sewer department staff shall receive a one-time bonus payment of maintenance of required operators licenses for each department. This payment shall be made with first payroll each calendar slash fiscal year and shall be one hundred fifty dollars for one license, two hundred fifty dollars for two licenses per year.
So my question would be, it states water and sewer department staff. So how would this affect, uh, Nathan? If he were to get licensed for something like that, because we've talked about through the years, we want to try to keep as many people cross trained in the city as we can. And sometimes there could be someone in public works that's licensed, that's outside of the sewer and water utility. Do, do we want to? I mean, I, I would think we would want that to apply for any sewer and water license for any individual in the city, would we not?
Absolutely. I don't know why we wouldn't. Do we need to be more defined on which specific licenses we're talking about as well?
Well, um, Nathan, what, how specific is it for the operator's license of a sewer utility and a water utility? I mean, that's a pretty clear license.
Yeah, you're your general.
Yeah.
And then there's subcategories to that that they can continue, um, the job description for it. So what dictates the subset or the additional to the license, but it's typical for just the general.
All right, subcategories is irrelevant. As long as you have the main certification, that's what we're discussing in this policy change.
As far as I've talked to everybody in the past, correct?
That was one point we really wanted to make too, that it would be in the file of the job description that that person is hired under because that wasn't there either. It wasn't laid out in their job. It would be in the posting, but also in their job description.
But I just want to make sure that any other employee within the city that would have those specific licenses would have the same bonus available. So how do you, how do you, uh, how should we clean up this motion then?
I would say Public Works Department personnel. Because the sewer water falls underneath public.
Any public works department personnel that carries an operator's license for a sewer or water utility is eligible for this annual bonus.
Clear, public works, but there's a lot of public. We're all licensed. There's a lot of different licenses. We're safety. Oh, we're safety. Yeah. We're completely, all right. Well, you're safe then.
Does that make sense?
I still want to.
Okay, so you want public works to replace water and sewer department? And then required water and sewer operators licenses for each department on the second line?
Just to spell out what those licenses are.
Correct.
I mean, you have an operator's license for a truck. Not the same.
Right, okay.
So is everybody clear on that? All right, then I would entertain a motion, uh, to approve that as, uh.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Rogers.
Second?
My second.
Kathy? Any further discussion? Uh, call a roll, please.
Blaha.
Yes.
Brewster.
Hi.
Shelton.
Hi.
Zimmerman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Taylor's absent with Nikki.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Motion carried.
J approved proposal to prepare grant application for voting infrastructure grant for Marina Dock replacement edge water resources. Let me get Jim on here. Uh, Wendy, would you grab me that microphone? I'm going to see if I can get Jim on speaker for.
Can you see if I, can you hear me now?
We don't hear you, Jim.
Okay. Try, how about this? Oh, Jeff.
Okay, Jim, we'll, uh, see how, well, we can, uh, everybody can hear you here.
I can hear you pretty well.
All right, well, I'm right here, so.
You can probably turn his volume on his computer now.
Turn your computer volume down. Just so that we're not hearing your background. Cause it's a delay. Yeah, you have earbuds?
Is the mic off?
How about now?
I mean, I don't think it made any difference.
We're often tedious. Is that maybe the reason that, um?
All right, well, this is gonna get Jim.
I can hear you well.
All right, so we are at the, uh, vote, voting infrastructure grant for the Marina docks.
Right. And we had minutes. I tracked the deadline and the final of a proposal that was recently to fill out a grant application for the body infrastructure. Grand program. Just a little background on that. I can hear some echoes, so I'll try to speak to you. Just let me know if this. We would work with Ed, Edgewater Resources to do that. Uh, we're, we had Ed Robert in the conversation with the mayor. Uh, Jeff Myers in the Scotts and Capital Solutions, uh, earlier in the week.
Scott Myers.
And um, this grant is a way for us to start to work with funding the, um, the, uh, design of the Marina. But it's oriented towards and transient project. So the way it would do that and say have to look at the Marina, there would be some time that we spend with, uh, the city, I'd be, I understand the all the transient slips from the transient markets that we're offering a plan for the Marina. Right now, you have some transient, uh, maybe around ten percent according to the um, they have a definition of transient boats as twenty-six meter longer. And I think they have to stay for summer or fall, five days. So the, the, the grant is really driven by economics. So it's an economic supported brand. What it's trying to do is provide to many with, with support to have voting visitors in their areas. We, we talked to Ed Water, but they've been very successful with this grant program. They were all twenty applications and all of those. Um, Greg, Mike, and he's their president. They had mentioned that, uh, some of those a couple swings at that, that's ball. But they did get grant to water at the end of those. So they carry pretty good record going into this uh, project, if you want them to go. The, um, so some of the things that just kind of logical fun kind of shit where whatever it not. It helps with planning, permitting, engineering, um, environmental studies or assessments. And what we would have to do is look at the, the, the structure of all we want to integrate transient blocks. And that has been a bit of a um, preaching with the concept plans that we did at the Sharetz. And that's what we was submit for grant application that it would help fund the design of this. You, you get a regard proportional to the amount of transient quarters that you have in your. Any questions?
Uh, Jim, if, uh, you could answer a question, so of the awards that Edgewater received, what was the city's match in some of those examples? You might not have that off the top of your head, but he did give an example, I thought, in the city of Kiwanee's case, it was uh, was it fifty fifty?
I don't, I don't recall it yet. In terms of what they're, they're proportional.
Do you recall?
Oh, well, the grand program requests, um, twenty-five percent.
Seventy-five, twenty-five, man.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and it's just, it, it's critical to understand that when we're talking transient dockage, um, some of the numbers he was throwing out was like thirty percent of Marina would be transient. That for Kiwanee would be extremely high. Uh, Augie, what did you say? Fifteen maybe?
We're wrong, yeah.
Kind of fifteen percent is what we're fairly, currently at. Um, and we don't want to over reach on that because if it's found out later on that we're selling them a seasonal slips, we could have to pay a portion of the grant back. So just keep that in mind. I mean, it's a good opportunity because we're going to have seasonal or transient slips regardless. And seventy-five percent, uh, from this grant is, is a good match.
So just to clarify, the transient slips are just in the Marina, not on the seawall, correct?
I believe, well, it would probably be considered in the new dock area. Not existing like the seawall, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I just had a question, Jim, in the second paragraph there, it says, based on existing revenue structure, the city could address substantial amount of the replacement cost through a revenue bond based on fund tool three revenues minus operational expenses, but a shortfall would exist. Is that line saying that there is a shortfall in revenue of the Marina to pay back a revenue bond?
No, it, it says that, uh, yes. So Edwater, let us forget. Biggies revenue bonds in a lot of these kinds of situations. Looking at the map or the I'm going to call phase one, which was that real basic, the first basic chance is three point two million dollars. Of that, um, a large part would be probably using a revenue bond. What's left chance would be about five hundred and fifty some thousand. That would be the money we have to set our sights on in terms of trying to recover the grant programs or through efforts to the Scotts and Capital Solutions. Whatever we could do, it can be our time.
Well, where's the, where are the funds from the revenue, from the revenue bond coming to pay off the revenue bond then?
Sorry, what?
If we get a revenue bond, where are the funds coming to pay off the revenue bond? Is that under general obligation?
Uh, I'm not real familiar with that. My assumption on revenue bond is that helps pay off the projects.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the dollars were coming from the projected revenue from the Marina.
Correct.
Based on.
Saying here a shortfall would exist. My question was that, is Marina not generating enough revenue to pay off the revenue bond?
No, that, what, what it's saying is the revenue bond would fund all, put about five hundred some some odd thousand dollars of the replacement cost to the docks.
Okay.
We would have, the, the revenue bond would cover most of the cost, but not all of that. Based on our revenue right now.
It's in the scenario that we played out in the, uh, high respect.
Right? Yeah, and so the the, uh, the back of the bond would be the Marina revenue, it wouldn't be it's backed by the Marina itself. The revenue of the Marina itself, it would not come back, would not revert to the taxpayers.
That's the, that's the idea, yes, that's exactly what I want.
Yeah.
And I think one word addition to that was, it was explained by Edgewater at the time that this did not include fuel sales or campground or boat launch, correct?
Right.
It was strictly slip sales.
Yeah, good plan slips, that's it.
No, I think, I think they may have been a little, uh, what sort I'm looking for, a, 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 a little hopeful on some of that, with some of those numbers. Okay, but again, this, we're looking at this as being one piece of the grant puzzle. One grant. So, we're working on others, but this is, Jim, what did you call this, the worst case scenario, we got no other grants, this is what we would do to get this Marina done?
Yes.
So, and the portion of the grant that's not covered by the revenue bond would be, would be general obligation debt?
Well, ideally, ideally would be either a voting infrastructure grant. Or if we can get the state to help us out. Through some monetary funding through their, through the budget, through the budgets.
Uh, what do you call that, secondary budget or supplemental budget?
Supplemental budget, yeah, where they fund projects. Um, if we can get somebody to help us with that. Then we aim for a target that's probably around six hundred thousand dollars to try and yeah, if we can, then we become general. We have.
That would be the state scenario.
Correct.
That's my question.
I was saying that he's mentioned too, that you could uh, submit for a tier two um, grand application. So, babe. And that one awards up to one and a half million dollars project. And so if you look at proportion that comes from the redesign of you might be able to have a lot of that. It, it's gonna take it takes some conversations, some lobbying, and tweaking of what we have to have Edgewater, which is a, this one, I'll let you make this work. But they've been successful doing that.
Yeah.
And, and again, this would be hopefully complementing something else that between, uh, Wisconsin Capital Solutions can get and things like that, and then of course the revenue generated out of the money. Uh, does anyone have any further questions of Jim? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve addendum eighteen to the agreement for professional service was, services with Cedar Corporation in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars and to authorize certain officials to sign the addendum. Would it? Yeah? Uh, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not, please call the hold, whoops, I'm sorry, Wendy, there you are again.
I am again. Um, has sort of looked over this contract.
No, but it's the same contract to be, I'm sorry.
And again, this did not go through finance committee, and I have concerns that it's gonna come out of the Marina. How much do we have?
I agree, we, we were, we were, uh, informed by the auditors that the money was there. I mean, they, they confirmed that the money was in the Marina fund, obviously that's a fluid thing, when they do an uh, assessment today and they get back to it so many months later. Do you like that?
Wouldn't shake my leg.
So, I understand what you're saying again, Wendy, and if we weren't in such a position here with timing again with the Marina. Um, so, okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not, please call the hold.
Blah.
Yep.
Brewster?
Right.
Shelton?
Yeah.
Zimmerman?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Taylor Zepson, was Nikki?
Yeah.
Brown?
Hi.
Motion carried. Okay, approved proposal for an economic impact analysis of the Kiwanis Marina, Cedar Corporation.
Hey, um, one of the things we've talked about over time going back in the days of the threat would be the value of having some sort of uh, study that recognizes economic impact of the Marina. On your statements. Um, we talked about that a little bit uh, recently with the group. And this always sat, we used to gather a proposal to help capture what's the improvements within Marina will mean to the Marina in terms of economic impact. The reason that was, um, liked by folks at Wisconsin Capital Solutions as well as others is that it helps give us some, something solid in terms of a, uh, study to demonstrate the value and its improvements to the city. When, when they go for conversations, these folks that's due probably any of us that might be involved with grants on your business. And we can play the part that demonstrates their economic value via the studies. We're so much better on the street. So, um, Edgewater has been involved with all economic impact analysis studies um, for Marina communities. They work with two models. One is through the university of Florida. And one is William and Mary, it's through the Marine Science. So they'll combine those models and, uh, basically um, work towards showing plans for improving the facilities that um, Kiwanis. So, that's what this, uh, this addendum is about. I did some back on, uh, economic impact analysis. It can range um, from five hundred dollars to tens of thousands of dollars. According to some of the reasons that, so I'd say from the standpoint of economy, this is about that.
So, does everybody understand for why? Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the addendum nineteen to the agreement for professional services with Cedar Corporation in the amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars? And to authorize certain officials to sign the denim? Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion, Wendy?
Um, and I'd just like to clarify my position. I really I really wish these things would go through the finance committee, I don't like seeing something Friday afternoon and have to vote out on Monday. This is, we are, we are talking about lots of money, and I just wish that I'd had a little bit more time to consider that we'd had a little bit more let the committees do their work. And so that's, I really have a problem with, with the, the getting something on Friday voting on Monday.
Yeah.
So, basically what is being said is we're more up to get grants if we do this study.
Correct.
And.
Unless it shows no value to Marina, then that would not benefit us, but, uh, it's presumably that the Marina is of a great value to the city of Kiwanis, it's been proven many times throughout the years. Both financially and throughout the community, so, so.
So, why do we move this then?
Because you're getting a, an actual study that would be officially presented when you're doing these grant requests as opposed to, uh, a poll of us. It's just another one of those grant type processes, go ahead, Jim.
I was just gonna say this is also aimed at the proposed approvals. So you're helping to quantify that now.
So, thirty, thirty hundred dollars basically lets us know how much of the impact the, the Marina does for the signals.
And it lets our grant, potential grant people understand that, that impact when you're making a decision, right?
I'm, I'm for the value of, of, of the thirty hundred dollars to see what, what we have, but I, I do agree with Wendy.
I agree.
See the work, yeah, you're doing this stuff anymore.
Well, that isn't, that isn't Cedar Corp, that's, uh, the administrator and myself looking in with, working with Augie and everybody else on some of these projects and looking at we hired Wisconsin Capital Solutions, right, to go forward, new lobbying. Cedar Corp is our, uh, on, on team engineering, and they've been tasked with trying to find money and how to get it. And that's exactly what we're trying to do here in a timely manner, uh, with the, the failing docks, so.
So, Jim, this wouldn't be part of what we already pay you to do?
That's why it's an addendum, correct? Over and above. Yes.
We'll just approve that money for your grant. Let's do June first. Now, we're saying we also need to approve some extra money for them to provide more supportive information to help us plan that.
All, yeah, any and all the grants that we're looking.
All of the grants.
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
And.
Yep.
I talked with, uh, Greg Wyckamp about that, I mean, why? So they would accelerate as fast as they can. So you could be looking at an end date that's three, four weeks from now. So you would have this
for that grant.
Yeah.
Report. I, I have, I, I'm, I'm with Wendy, and I really feel concerns because we don't know what's in the Marina fund, and we've just been approving quite a bit of money here. And I do, and I do like the idea of utilizing our committees, because what's the point of our committees are clear if we're not putting this, I agree. So.
But, aside note, though, I think there's, there's value at thirty hundred dollars, see what impact it does happen.
Well, Wendy said the same thing, she's not disagreeing with.
Right.
It's, I understand, and I apologize, the timing did not allow us to get this done. That way. I've been in your shoes as a chairman of a committee as well, and I understand. Alright, so is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second? If not, please call the roll.
Blah.
Yes.
Brewster?
Hi.
Shelton?
Yeah.
Zimmerman?
Hi. Nelson? May on principle.
Taylor Zepson, was Nikki?
Hi.
Brown?
Motion carried. L, financial reports, month ending January twenty, Jim, I'm gonna let you go. Thank you. Alright, we'll talk about him now, he's still with us.
It's not that, it's the.
It's the echo. I already have issues with the right side fighting with the left side, and then you add that in the middle.
Any discussion on the financial reports?
Wendy? I noted that we, we just have the, um, the checking and payroll. We do not have beginning numbers, you don't have cash balances. I was told by the auditor today
Yep.
that, um, I should have those numbers by Monday, so that I can get them in and start working on reconciliations for the last, um, well, almost three months, two months at least. Um, March will be in another week, but, yeah, so hopefully by the next time we meet. I hope so.
We are, uh, uh, one hundred percent on workforce.
Yes, we are.
Okay, cause I'd had some questions about that, and I was fully under the impression that we were all in on it, so.
Yep, we are all in.
Just a matter of reconciliation at this point.
Right, because we have to get good, solid beginning numbers.
Correct.
So waiting on the auditors to do that, and he, like I said, told me today that he should have those to me by Monday.
Okay.
And my point was that we are approving what's in front of us right now. Which is checking.
Alright, then do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion. I'll second.
That's probably.
Yep.
Uh, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Really?
Yeah. Put that away.
Blah.
Yes.
Brewster?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Zimmerman?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Taylor's absent, was Nikki?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Motion carried. M, authorized closure of the city hall administration office on Thursday, April thirteenth, so that office staff can attend training.
There is training coming up, and it's actually being held at the village of Denmark. Um, so we don't have to go far, but it's got some really good, um, courses that they're gonna be teaching. Um, one is cemetery, um, you know, uh, administration. The other one is liquor license, um, administration. And then I forgot what the other one, oh, the other one was, uh, computer safety procedures. I, I'm looking at him, he's just written.
I've got a lot of information for you tomorrow.
Okay, but.
I make a motion, we approve this.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. N, application for a temporary Class B retail license, Kiwanis Fire Department Auxiliary Incorporated to hold a broad fry on May twelfth, twenty twenty-three, it's seventy-six.
That's the wrong address. It's ninety-six, yeah.
Ninety-six Olive Street, just to be clear, the proper address there.
I didn't know it in the lake. Well, it was on the application, so I copied that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
She carried. Any announcements?
Yes.
Wendy?
Hi.
How'd it hurt for you lately?
Nothing about finances either, um, the Friends Bookshop, which is the Friends of the Larry, the Friends of the Library, uh, new bookstore is open now, and its address is five thirteen Milwaukee Street. It's open one to four on Fridays and ten to three on Saturdays. It is the cutest, most lovely little store. And people should, uh, really take advantage of checking it out and buying some books. They've worked, these ladies have worked really, really hard to put this together, and it looks wonderful. What's the address? Uh, five thirteen Milwaukee Street.
Any other announcements?
Yes. Uh, this Saturday, uh, it's the fifty annual that's still in Kiwanis Lions Club, uh, Roar on the Shore. Uh, it's the main fundraiser, both the Kiwanis and the Dexter Lions Clubs. A lot of, uh, local companies, businesses are sponsoring it. A lot of the money that we raise from this goes to schools and a lot of local charities and, and things around the community. Tickets are still available for it. There is a bus leaving from, uh, the port call. So there's a flyer, and if anybody's going to see it. It's, it's a good time. Um,